Okay, is everybody ready?
I think we're good.
Okay, we're gonna get started. Good evening and welcome to the Fourth School Committee Oh wow, the volume's on. Thank you, Jason. To the Fourth School Committee's negotiating subcommittee meeting with the TTA, both teachers and ESPs. We'll make tonight's meeting at 4:33 PM. And if we could start with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Of course.
Okay, before I turn it over to our council to start with how we're gonna proceed, I just wanted to share, I had reached out to TTA leadership on behalf of the committee and the committee's interest to participate in any way in the educational experience that students are having. So, I wasn't sure of the right way to get in touch with everybody. So, through our central office, I guess that you have to click off an Aspen if you're, you know, a member. So, I, it's hard to collate an email list of just TTA members from, I guess, the district side. So, I feel like maybe this is the best way to get that information out there. So, you know, essentially, I had said, and we all still mean, that we have a willingness to be present in the classrooms, visit any part of the TPS Teachers' Day. I think, you know, as we're considering proposals and being kind of thoughtful as to, you know, some of the concepts that we're talking about, I think we'd prefer to be invited to know that you want us there. So, you know, keep that in mind, you know, whether you wanna somehow invite the school committee to be present for different parts of the school day.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over now to Mrs.
Thanks. Hi, everybody. We're starting off with ESPs.
Yes.
Okay, great. So, how would you like to proceed? I think I'm looking at Emily as an aspect.
So, we were kind of hoping that we could get a compensation proposal and then we could digest that for a quick minute and then we could come back with some stuff that we had. Does that work for you guys?
Yep. We also have some counters to the common proposals that the two units have.
Oh, great.
But we'll, we'll, as you said, if you're looking for our salary counter, we do have one.
Okay, awesome.
And we've combined it with counters to your proposal regarding Article 5 and the stipends. We haven't responded to the longevity proposal. We're still holding on that, but we do have a salary counter.
Okay.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Which one do you need? No, I can only wait a second. I just wanna first deal with this one. Salary proposal counter that we have somewhat modifies our proposal about the length of workday that we're asking our ESPs to, 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 to work.
So, this modifies the proposal you already gave?
Yes, about the length of workday.
Okay.
And why don't we talk, we'll go backwards. We'll talk about the salary first.
Okay.
So, if you wanna go to the salary table, we have some data, but we'll give that to you a little bit later on. It's one page. However, starting with the current salary, we now look to what we're proposing to do in the three years of the upcoming contract. As you can see, we have two tables. We're gonna talk about the RBT table in a minute, but let's talk about the two tables. The 7.0 hour slash 184 day. Then there's a table for 6.0, 6 hours 20 minutes, 182 days, which is the current schedule for employees. For the first two years of the contract, we are proposing that anybody who's a current employee may choose to work the longer day slash year or the shorter day slash year. Same hourly rate, you know, whichever degree or no degree column you're in. But if you wanna take advantage of the extra hours, if you will, that's up to you if you're a new, if you're a current employee. In year three, though, we will phase that out and everybody's under our proposal working the seven-hour day. That helps us incorporate the change that you all proposed at the very beginning to no longer contract with the agency folks, but they do work a seven-hour day. And their work requires them to work a seven-hour day because of the students who they service. So, over the course of three years, we envision that we will migrate, maybe not all of those precision HR positions, but some of them, such that the current unit will not decrease over the three years. To the contrary, it will probably increase. But it may not be the same number if you add together the current town employees and the current precision aid. It may not equal that. It might equal something short of that. But, any current position or the current FTE is not gonna be decreased according to this current plan.
Okay.
Okay. So, why is the RBT separately addressed? That's sort of a counter to the proposal that the, the TTA made about the RBTs being eligible for additional compensation. So, what we did instead was we included that in a separate salary table because we envision a situation where someone is going to be assigned as an RBT and of course, they require the CERT. So, if they're working as an RBT, they have the CERT. They will be on this schedule, which is a bit of a bump, recognizing the specialized skill. And I understand that precision sends over a handful of RBTs at the, at the current workforce. Okay. So, those positions would probably be migrated over to the unit. We have some data for you to show, like, the percentages represented by this.
Okay.
And I'll, we can share it in a little while. But for now, I just wanted you to focus on, you know, what this actual hourly rates annualized looks like. So, if you turn back a page, you'll see, and I think this is redundant of a proposal we made earlier, I apologize, on the Article 5 subsection 3 language. Let's say we eventually migrate over, like I said, the positions that were formerly occupied by precision aids, but we were interested in offering positions to those individuals.
Right.
Some of them. I'm not expecting, and we're not expecting, that they would accept a cut in pay. So, if we can take into account the years of experience working in the schools, but not directly employed by the schools, that makes sense. So, and broadening the concept, if we get an applicant who has years of experience in another district, for example, we think they should be, as teachers are, placed on the salary schedule commensurate with their, their work experience. You know? So, the administration wants the flexibility to decide whether they should start at step 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. Now, going backwards, we'll now talk about the stipends, unless anyone has any questions about the salary schedule. I think we've given you a lot to talk about.
Yeah, that's, I think we just go through and then we just...
You understand, you've seen these before. And I will say, we, we'll talk a little bit about how we've moved. Last contract, as you know, we, we did some major surgery to the salary schedule and now I think we are again. So, you can see that we, we understand, you know, we, we listened to what folks were saying. All right, so the stipends. We did, in a slightly modified fashion, agree to your introductory language. I, I think it's important, and I think this is maybe part of why you put this in here. If folks are doing an Appendix B position, but in the teacher's contract, that should be pensionable for, for you all. So, I agree, that makes sense to put that language in there.
Okay.
The diapering stipend, we have agreed to your proposal to increase it to $20. We also did agree to add the hourly rate for the club assistant, the outside-of-school hours, people that need to accompany students for an accommodation, and the kindergarten orientation. Folks have been doing it and, you know, you should be paid for those hours. The only stipulation, I guess, is that the, the, the work is approved in advance and you are appointed indeed by your supervisor to do the work, which we don't foresee is gonna be a problem. But you can't have people saying, "Oh, I worked overtime. You know, 12 hours yesterday, can I, can you pay me?" There has to be some budgetary control over that. But again, I don't think there's gonna be any issue with that. And then, again, the last bullet point, we talked about the RBTs. We've, we've proposed to make the separate salary schedule. Does anybody on the committee side have anything to add before we move on? Okay. Any questions before we move on to the, the last piece that we need to discuss? Okay. We have modified our proposal about short-term substituting in response to your proposal about long-term substituting.
Okay.
And hopefully, this is a cohesive whole. Well, you can see it. I, I think the, the nugget is if you're gonna be short-term subbing, i.e. up to 10 days, the district wishes for some discretion to assign people so that you don't have that in the moment, "Will you do it?" No. "Will you do it?" No. You know, you need to plug the holes a little more nimbly than that scenario. But for the troubles, we have bumped up the rates, as you can see. And then for the long-term assignment, obviously, they can't, against your will, place you as a long-term sub. That would be something you would apply to do. And if appointed, you would follow the teacher's schedule at that point. And again, there's a bump that is a car, is a counter to what you had all proposed. But it is, as you can see, an increase in what's currently in the contract. Instead of $60 per day, we bumped that initial rate to 100. And instead of $80 a day, we bumped that final rate to 150. Okay?
It's on top of, that's on top of their current salary.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You get your, your, obviously, your pay plus an additional daily rate to take on these duties. That's, thank you for reminding me.
So, this, just to go back, so this, when you say amend Article 5, 'cause you had already made a proposal for that section.
Yes.
So, this is replacing that?
Yes. We've modified what we put out there last, at the very first time. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we thought it might have made sense, as I said, to do little subtitles, short-term, long-term. And to make it clear that the short-term, we're seeking to have the authority to assign, but long-term, obviously, you, the employee can apply or not apply.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, second one of clock dropped. Okay. So, we'll, I guess we'll save the common proposals for later on, the responses to the common proposals.
Okay.
We're still holding on the family medical leave one just to kinda break the suspense. Yeah.
All right. So then, do we wanna take a, take a little break? We can go back to this or not a break, probably?
If you wanna make some proposals or whatever you wanna, you know, present to us and then we can...
Well, I'll be upfront with you. One of our comments was about your original one of these. So, I think we have to go back and mesh, you know, old with new, too. So, if we could just go back and, so we're on the same page with that one?
Yeah.
And then we'll see. Okay.
You wanna do that now or do you wanna give us something to caucus about?
Well...
Trying to make it efficient.
No, I get it.
You don't have to.
'Cause all of our things were waiting on that. I think it's because most of what we were waiting for had to do with this. So, I think now that we have it, we have a lot more to come back to you with at, at a different time.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that we're, we can read this one 'cause this is, this Article 5 is what we were planning to respond to. So, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
All right, so...
Quick.
You bet. Whatever you need.
Yep.
What do you want for time, then?
You want...
20?
We're just coming back at 5?
5?
5:05.
5:05. 5:05 sound good?
Perfect.
Sure. Okay, great.
Motion to adjourn.
Go into executive.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
For executive session.
Yeah.
So, 5:05.
All right, thank you.
Our meeting at 5:09. And we just have a couple more handouts to break down some of the stuff that Larry gave you.
I should have given this to you before you caucus, my bad. I was trying to figure out which folder they were in. So, one of the sheets talks, it puts in sort of percentage language what we just handed you on the salary table. Because the salary tables we provided, I don't believe have what the percentages looks like.
Right.
Okay, so just figured you'd like to see that information. And the second one, it's side by side, sort of, compares our proposal with your proposal. And then in red, it shows the difference between the proposals.
When this says, sorry, just a clarifying point. It says Tewksbury Teachers Association, but you mean, but that's just because it's us, but it's about the ESPs only?
Are you looking at, which one are you looking at?
I don't know which one I'm looking at, hold on.
Yeah, no, I know.
Oh, wait, okay, all right, I think I figured out my question.
Yes, these, the documents and the information we handed you deals with just the ESP.
Okay, okay.
And I should tell you, I think, I'll correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Libby, the TTA new money numbers include both salary and longevity, is that right?
No, just, that's-
Just salary?
Just salary.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, wait a minute, base pay longevity step up coverage?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay.
And we don't propose any changes at this time, we're holding on longevity-
Right.
...coverage, okay. And, yeah. So those are just pieces of information. Check our math.
And-
I will. No, no, I want you to.
I always double check.
I want to make sure we're all operating on the same set of facts before we proceed too far into this, you know? That makes, that's good for everybody. Sorry Ted, were you going to say something?
Yes, if you could forward to Connor or Emily, the costing, that would be helpful for us to evaluate.
Yes.
Is this, I'm going to ask this question to Dave, is this in Excel when you send it? Oh, thank you, okay, great.
So who should, well, I'll say Emily.
Yeah.
Who should Emily expect the costing email from?
I would say, if you don't mind, Dave, you can certainly directly, yeah, I don't want to be, me, I feel funny directly communicating with folks on the team. Yeah, it just doesn't seem, doesn't feel right. But if the members of the administration want to speak, you know, communicate with members of the team, I think that makes more sense. Okay, so those are information. And we will be happy to send you whatever financial-
I think Peter has one question.
I have a question on the percentages chart.
Yeah.
Does this, I don't, I think I, I think I know the answer, but I just want to double check. Does this percentages chart include the percentage of increase of time?
Yes, yeah.
It does. It's the highs and the lows, take that into account. Yes, but as you know, the, the per hour percent increase is the same.
So, so that low and high, wait.
Yeah, is that?
That, I mean, it's all connected to money, so that seems like it's percent, I'm just like, the seven hour day is reflected in percentages based on the-
What one are you looking at?
Wait a minute.
Looking at that one.
I'm just asking where it exists.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
I'll have to defer to Dave again.
He does.
So I took today's workforce, plus any people we would, we would be bringing over in the transition, put all those, the new people as we progressed with the absorption of the precision HR people, those folks all in on the seven hour scale, and assumed that half of the current staff would go to seven hours and left half at the six hour twenty minute.
That's the cost estimate, right?
Just, yeah, for assumption's sake, I didn't know.
So this is the assumption, based on the concerns that we aired in our first meeting of the precision age, the assumption is we'll take half of those people over? Based on our concerns?
Not those actual people, the positions.
Okay, not those, okay, got it.
Any new positions over the course of the, the three years I brought in at the seven hour scale?
Right.
Any current positions, I split the group in half, and tried my best to do, you know, if there were 20 people on step four, I put 10 into six hour schedule, seven, 10 at the seven hour schedule, tried to keep it, because I don't know who's going to select what.
Right, of course, yeah, yeah.
So I just-
Yeah, that makes complete sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Right.
I got a question.
Yeah.
So the average, the increases per individual, wait, versus, you know, FY '25, does that include step movement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so can I just clarify one thing with that Ted? So, when you look at the current table, as it is today in the contract, in the current year that we're in, and then you go to our, our counterproposal, excuse me, so I just took one step, for example, with degrees, step one, today, currently, in this year, they would go, they would increase from the $20.44 hourly rate today to a $24 an hour rate in step two in the next year, the new year, year one of the contract, which breaks out roughly to approximately about a 15% raise, just based on the hourly rate, not including any additional time worked, in that scenario, of course. Based on the six hour and 20 minute day at 181 days a year, that's 1,146 hours, when you do the math, with a seven hour day and 184 day proposal, that's 1,288 hours, or an increase of approximately 12.4% in terms of number of hours. So that is also factored into the annual salary piece as well, which then translates to the 31,000, almost 31,000, versus today, the 23,000 that you're currently getting in that step one. Does that make sense? So it's about roughly a $7,000 increase on a 20, today, $23,000 salary, so approximately 33%, when it's, when you factor it all in, step increase, hour increase, and then hourly rate increase.
Over.
Okay.
Takes me a while to look at math.
No, it's a lot.
It's a lot, yeah.
All right, I think, all right, I think with data in, you know, just in hand and that, those kinds of things, I do think that your ending proposal, so on, on the original sheet, the ending salary step for a person with a degree is our starting, our proposed starting salary for a first year, no degree person. So with not looking at any of this, I would say that that math isn't going to work out to the living wage idea that we have been going for. Because of that, we are going to hold to our original proposal for now, although we will look at your data and your math, and double check your work. So, thank you for that. I just think that in the interest of looking at every of this, we're going to hold to the original for now. We do have a comment on Article Five, and I actually think that this came up last year, if I, or last time around, if I remember. We are extremely concerned about the idea of a principal, something being in the contract that gives the principal the ability to violate an IEP in the reassigning of an aide, so in, or ESP. So what I mean is, if the principal wants to reassign the aide assigned to my team, let's not, forget one on ones, let's just talk about like a classroom aide. If they want to assign the ESP to my classroom, to somebody else for that day, the six students in my classroom are now without a service. How much of a, not that you can quantify a violation of an IEP, but how far that goes depends on what I'm doing that day. If I'm giving a quiz or a test, there are far more accommodations not being met now than if I'm just lecturing. So we are very concerned about putting something in here that doesn't give discretion, and then I can just lose the ESP, the ESP can just be pulled from something that they're working on, or from something they've planned on helping a student with, something they talked to the teacher about assisting a student with, they're just pulled, and now that whole dynamic is thrown off, as well as that student, or in a lot of cases, it will be multiple students, IEPs may now be in violation. So not talking about the money aspect of it, that is a huge concern for us. And I know that that's not someone's intention, but that is how it plays out now with discretion. So if there isn't any, we expect that problem to get worse.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
So the ultimate accountability to the services provided in an IEP-
Yes.
-falls on who in the building?
What do you mean? You mean like in my particular room, or you mean staffing wise?
If a student does not receive their services, who ultimately owns that accountability, that responsibility in the building?
If, yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Well, if it's a 504, it's the individual teacher. If it's an IEP, it's the district.
Right.
So that's my, so I guess that's my question. So if your concern is that a principal would violate the IEP, ultimately, the accountability falls on the principal, is that, do I understand that wrong?
It would fall on the, it would fall on the district, I suppose, but yes.
Okay.
And I think we, I think we just want to like knowingly, we don't want to knowingly put the district in positions where we're constantly doing that because of this language, that's what we're trying to say.
Right, and we need to confirm and reassure everybody that the district understands its obligation to provide students the services that they're guaranteed in their 504 plans and their IEPs. Because we live in the real world, sometimes stuff happens, but the district knows its obligation to compensate people when a service rises to the level of deprivation. So this contract, in our opinion, will not increase the risk of what you just said, because under the current system, the principal still solicits a person to step up. That will not change. Now it's just, the principal will still be soliciting people, but it'll be more of a, I'm assigning you, rather than will you do it yes or no? Do you know what I mean? But they still understand-
Definition of soliciting, though, to ask, ask someone yes or no?
Right, well, okay, so let me back up. I think in their decisions on how to cover what needs to be covered when a teacher is absent, they already understand the obligation to provide students what they're promised in their IEPs and 504 plans. They already understand that. So I think what Bridgette was saying is, we understand it's the district, the buck stocks with the district, you know?
I understand, okay, so I understand that, we're not saying that the district doesn't know its obligations or anything like that, but to your point about the real world, we are the ones who have to sit with little Jimmy as he doesn't get what he needs. And we are the ones who get, you know, the, we are the first line, really, for parents, and so we get those emails first, and they have to go up the chain, and we are the ones who have, the ESP got pulled, now no one can help Sarah with her behavior plan, and so she's having, you know, a moment today, and it's bad, and blah, blah, blah. We are that line.
Yes.
And so as the one, as the people who live that, I am aware that, we know it happens, I get phone calls, you know, we need somebody, we need this, we need that, but we're always in this toss up of, well, how bad is it going to be if we have to lose a person, if they have to move here? have to move here? Right now, we all get to collaboratively make that choice when it happens. And I understand that there's staffing problems, there's come, you know, we don't have enough subs, there's all these things.
That's exactly the genesis of this.
Right. I think that to a certain degree to that, though, offering people a living wage would help, because then we would have more people to cover and we'd have more people staffing. But on a side note, that problem is going to get worse if, because I know for a fact that right now, there are ESPs who say, "Oh, I can't today, I can't today," and then they run out, and so maybe the admin has to cover, maybe they have to rework some of the sub-schedules. Other things can happen. We are concerned that it will, the problem will get worse with this kind of proposal, and that autonomy over, you know, I'm only in a seventh and eighth-grade building, but if you're a second-grade ESP, there's a big difference between those kids and fourth grade. So getting shifted, that can have a giant impact on those kids, on everybody in the situation. So that's what we are worried about.
Okay.
I think part of it goes back to the point Emily was originally making is, it's different when it's like kind of more of the collaborative decision, because it depends on your lessons that day, right? Like, if I'm delivering a lesson where there's group work, I might be able to, you know, partner little Jimmy up with someone who will work well with that person, who will help him or her, et cetera. Whereas if I'm giving an assessment that day, I might really need that support for him, and having it pulled away is not best for him at all, because how is he going to successfully get through that?
I'm confused a little bit. This, this contract we're talking about is ESPs, they're the ones right now who get to say yes or no to the request.
Right, but sometimes they'll ask, because we have no time to collaborate with each other, sometimes you can't ask the ESP, because they don't know, because we haven't had a second to talk. So instead, they call the classroom teacher. "What are you doing today? I'm giving a test, or I'm giving a quiz, and working on projects, and doing this." And ultimately, that line of questioning leads to, "Can I take your ESP?"
Okay.
Because they, now, right now, I can say, not me, but I can say, "Well, you know, I'm not totally in need, ask the ESP." And, you know, this is the line it has to go through, because they might literally not know what is going on that day, because we have no time to common plan or prep or any of that stuff together. So the problem will eventually get worse if you end up with, oh, they've, you know, people have said no, because everybody's busy, okay, I have to come up with another solution. As opposed to, everybody has said no, I'm going to pick eaty-meeny-miney-moe. That's something we're concerned about.
I think a little more thought's going to be going into that, that decision. It's a, it's a, it's a struggle, and they try to do the best they can every day. Okay, we understand, I think we get your...
Can I put in as an ESP?
Of course.
I think, I think it's fair to give us a choice. I'd love to know how many ESPs have ever said no, when they know the principal's in dire need. I don't think there's many of us, but I think it's, I think there are maybe a handful of ESPs out there that are not comfortable taking over classrooms. They, that's not what, if they were, maybe they would be teaching. So I think it's fair to give them the choice whether they're comfortable doing that, and if you take that out and say, "The principal will assign," you're not giving them that choice.
Understood. Anybody else have any? No.
No.
No, thank you for that perspective. Okay.
Do you want to go to the common proposals, then?
Um, did you want to talk about the long-term substituting or the other stuff?
We want to look at money altogether, so we hadn't quite gone through that, especially with the new data and everything.
Did you, so you, did you have any other feedback on our proposals?
No, because we were, and I'm going to be honest, waiting for money. So we were waiting for your salary. But we do, we were looking at the whole, it holistically, so that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. Sure, so you want to talk about our counters to your common proposals?
Yes.
So we have, let me just, sorry for jumping around here.
We have those.
Yeah, we have a counter on the assault protection, we have a counter on bereavement, we have a counter on the assignment language.
Okay.
And, let's see. We would also like to tell you that we, although we have current plans to, as you know, phase the positions currently performed by the Precision HR folks, if everything else falls into line, to migrate them over. So in one sense, we accept your proposal about subcontracting, but we don't really accept it, we're just making the, the decision to reorganize the staff. But as far as other subcontracting, we really can't, we agree to that as a contractual matter, because sometimes we just can't, can't retain or hire people in on certain positions. The other, we're holding on the parental leave. We have talked about accepting the proposal to allow sick days in .5 increments, but we were trying to see if you would accept our proposal on substitute coverage. It appears that you're not exactly rejecting it, but you're inclined to not accept it.
Yes.
The sick leave, you wanted to add stepparents and grandparents to the list of folks who you can take that limited amount of days to care for, we accept that. So that's the rest of it, but the counters, you'll see, they're on their way to you.
Okay.
I think we hit every one of the common proposals. I think we kind of telegraphed how we were going to respond here through our last discussions, but on the first section, we, in all instances, we can't, we can't bind ourselves to a one-school-day turnaround, so we said promptly. And we also want to sort of keep the need-to-know people kind of a tight circle, you know, because it is a sharing of confidential information regarding students and employees in some cases. So we, we proposed that the district will acknowledge the report, and we were going to take out carbon copy, because I don't know that I would ever be able to find a carbon copy. Maybe there's one in my basement, but, so, copy, you know, I'm calling an audible here, we'll just strike out carbon copy, carbon. And then we want to make sure that the president obviously understands their obligation to maintain confidentiality of student and employee information. And we know that that's a contextual obligation, the extent to which confidentiality has, confidentiality has to be maintained. We accept B, the definition, and then C, we did a little bit of typos, I see here, notwithstanding. We want to broaden out who's going to be investigating, because sometimes it may not be the assigned building administrator, it may be perhaps the Title IX coordinator, for example. And then 48 hours is something, again, which we might be able to comply with, but sometimes there's a lot to an investigation, and you need more than 48 hours. In any event, we'll share the findings when they're, when they're finished with the unit member and the union president, again, who shall maintain confidentiality. And then the, the unit member will have the opportunity to respond in writing, so if they disagree with any of the findings, they can certainly set that out, which may, as sometimes happens, cause the district to reopen the investigation, to do a little bit more fact gathering. You probably know this, investigations sort of follow a predictable course, and sometimes you have to hit the rewind button and go back and collect more information. And then on Section 2, we just wanted to make it clear that this is a operations issue that the committee's not really directly involved in, investigating workplace incidents. So we wanted to make it clear that we all understand that it's through the superintendent that these things are happening. We agree with Section 3, we agree with Section 4. On Section 5, we, you know, the folks are covered by workers' compensation. I know it doesn't make you 100% whole for workplace incidents, but there's, I don't know how to put this, if someone suffers an injury at work, it's probably not sustainable to keep them on full compensation forever. Let's say it's a long-term, you know, impairment. So there has to be some budgetary consideration given to, to that piece of it. So as you know, the employees have sick leave, which they can certainly apply to whatever period of incapacity, and they also have the benefit of workers' compensation coverage. Any questions before we move on? Okay. And bereavement, we have essentially tried to sort of standardize it, so to speak, across the units. So we did kind of pull in the sibling piece from, I think, I can't remember which unit had that, but now both do. And then the aunts and uncles, close friends, both have that. We set up to five days for the first category and up to two days, because what if you don't want to take five days? You want to take less than five, fewer than five days. But if you want the five, obviously, that's your contractual right.
I have, can I ask one question about that? What if you have, if, so if I have, say, a family member pass in September, and then a family member pass in May, it's not up to five, like, it's five per loss, up to five per loss?
I don't know how the district has interpreted that. We'd have to kind of look and see how everybody's all applied that. I don't know off the top of my head in Tewksbury how that's been interpreted. I hope nobody here, unfortunately, would know.
Up to five, they don't mean per year, do they mean per loss or per year?
We can certainly talk about that.
I'm just wondering, as a question, yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is, there's no intent to change the current practice in this?
No. It's just kind of a recognition of, well, like I said, some people aren't going to take a full five, some people will, some people may take more if they're having, I'm not a clinician, but there's a complicated grief that some people experience, where they're actually impaired from working, and that would, that would entitle them to take sick time, you know, but that's kind of going beyond what we're discussing here. Okay, so the assignment language, I think you heard, we heard you, I hope that you heard that we heard you on the, you want as much notice as possible of what your assignment's going to be, that's the best situation for everybody. However, we need to allow some leeway for unanticipated changes of the target in terms of who the students are, what the student population profile is. So we need to be able to change assignments when necessary. So we had, we had to put that in there. So we hope that that addresses your concerns in a satisfactory way.
Any questions for anyone on our end regarding this?
Can you just go through the other ones that you had talked through, just so I have it?
Yeah, and let me just grab your proposals while I'm going to speak and send everybody off scratching their heads. Hold on a moment, please. Okay, so...
So actually, I just have a question about the subcontracting.
Yes.
And we are very glad to hear that you've agreed to stop the subcontracting for Precision. It sounds like you still want the ability to subcontract certain positions.
Well, I think it would be more like a case-by-case, we posted, couldn't find an applicant, we have no choice but to solicit, you know, a person to do this through an agency. Do you know what I mean? And I think that's the current practice. They try to, to get people to respond to postings, but sometimes it just doesn't, it doesn't happen. So the common, and then the ESP proposals, I'm sorry, I'm fumbling around, trying to find here, oh, here we have, okay. So the January 4th proposals, the working conditions preparation time?
No, I was going to say the com...
Oh, the common proposals, I apologize, I thought you meant USO. Yeah. No, I haven't, thank you, I'm sorry, I was on the wrong set. Yes, so the safe, well, the Unit A and B not subcontracting, we are, I think we're rejecting including that as a contract provision, but the district is, as you can see, presently planning to phase out Precision HR, using Precision HR to procure additional aides, or ESPs, if that makes sense. To the extent we're not talking, it's not going to be in the contract, in other words, but we're trying our best to make everybody a direct employee.
Right.
Okay? And then the assault protection, we talked about, parental leave, we're still holding on that one. Bereavement, we talked about. Sick days, we talked about. Sick leave, we talked about, and assignment, we talked about.
Oh, this, so the sick leave one you're adding, you, the grandparent one?
Yes, you had asked to add in stepparents and grandparents to the definition of who can access sick leave for that, the, you know, the provision it falls under.
Yep.
Yeah, just increasing the category of family, per your request.
Did you talk about sick days? The half-sick days?
Oh, and then the half...
We did talk about the half-sick days.
It was connected to the stuff. So is that, then, the new Article 5 you gave us, you're still linking the two?
Yes, then you can see why, because if you increase access to sick leave, you may be increasing the incidences of absences, thereby increasing the need for principals to plug holes in their buildings. And so they want it to be, again, a little bit more nimble in the way that they're able to approach that.
I think one more thing to add there, and I go back to a comment, I think Emily made that you made last time. You know, you come to work, not feeling all that great, it's 9:00, 9:30, 10 o'clock, you're going to take the rest of the day off as a sick day, as a half-sick day. Now that principal's got to go and adjust, and we don't have time to go, to go get a substitute for the rest of the day, right? So just having that flexibility, I think is kind of where we're coming from.
Any questions from anybody at all?
I have one, actually.
Okay.
Would we still be putting into, like, if we knew it was a, you know, we had a 1 o'clock, an ESP had, or a teacher had a 1 o'clock, you know, doctor's appointment, and we needed that half-day, I'm assuming we would still put it in frontline, though, so that we could get a sub for the second half of the day?
Like, if you knew?
Or is that what is being taken off the docket, which is why you want the flexibility?
I imagine.
Because I get in the circumstance, Rich just said, makes perfect sense.
I don't know if, Brenda, you want to answer that, but if you could in advance enter it into frontline, like, I'm taking a half a sick day on, you know...
Well, I think the key here is whether it's an appointment or sick. If you already know you're going to be sick for the second half of the day, you'd probably be putting in a sick day, but I'm...
You want to take sick days for appointments, though?
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
Medical appointments?
Right, like, if I have a doctor's appointment, and I know it, and I still, and I'm healthy enough to come in the first half of the day, I would use a half a sick day for the second half.
I guess, let me answer those in two things. I'm not sure on the doctor appointment piece, but I am sure that, yes, it would go into frontline, either way. And I think if we know we need the sub, you know, in advance, that would be very helpful.
But sometimes, as Rich said, sometimes people take ill during the day.
Yeah. Right. I think the opposite's probably more often as well, right, where people are finding out in the morning, and then they put in that half-day, but know they can come in later. So I think we could, I think every detail's hard to play out right here, but you'd have to think about that.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that we would still be putting in frontline in hopes of getting the sub for a half-day in that situation.
Ideally, there'd be one of each, right? And then you'd have the sub for the whole day.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll just add, Section 2, Mr. Petrie, you mentioned something about the committee through the superintendent on assault protection, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
Can you just restate that? I think I heard you right, but I just want to make sure I understand what you were saying.
Yeah, so the, the compliance with, you know, answering reasonable requests or requests for information and being a liaison with these teacher-town, that's an operations issue, not a school committee issue. So we just wanted to make it clear that the administration would be the point person on that, not the school committee. That's not their role under Ed reform.
I appreciate that language.
Sure, sure.
So in this session, we still have about 20 minutes or so. We'd like a caucus, both sides.
Yeah. Rosie, I think there's some things that they've raised that we should probably make a caucus about, if you guys are amenable to that.
Yeah, before we do that, just let me, so we know where you guys are all on our proposals. Just go back. So we had obviously modified the length of the workday on our proposal number one, and we had modified that by, at least for the first two years of the contract, making it for current employees optional. You're still holding on your response to that, yes?
Yes.
And then the Article 5, Section 3 changes on our proposal 2. And then the Article 5, Section 3 changes on our proposal 2, allowing the superintendent to decide what new employees, what step they're going to be on. You're still holding on that one?
We're going to, we're going to look at that.
Okay.
We're looking at that.
Sure. And then, we have a tentative agreement on our proposal number 3. We had longevity language about how years of service are calculated.
Yep.
I think you're still holding on that one?
The longevity?
Yeah. We had proposed changing the language about this will be paid retroactive. We had a chunk of language about-
Oh, we did, we did talk about that. Well, I think, didn't we have a proposal to increase longevity?
That's a separate-
Yeah, we had done separate ones, so we hadn't, like, merged them together yet because we had separate.
Yeah. All right. And then we had talked about personally blackout days, so to speak. I think you guys were, I don't think you responded to us on that one yet?
No, because we're, we, holistic, we're trying to go holistic.
Holistic. All right. And then, okay, so I guess you're holding on everything, it's the bottom line. Okay. All right. So-
We'd like to maybe caucus until 5:55, come back and end this session. We may, I'm not sure if we'll have any responses, but-
We'll try, yeah, yeah.
Is that good? And then we'll take that 10-minute break? Is that good?
Yep, we'll see how far we can get. That sounds like a plan.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You have to vote to motion?
Motion to adjourn, yep.
44 to return at 5:55.
Yeah.
Presuming the meeting at 6:00 PM. We've resumed the meeting at 6:00 PM. Maybe we could do five minutes to wrap up if that's possible?
Sure.
And then, do we still want our break?
I'm, yeah. Whatever. So, yeah.
Okay. So maybe five, let's see how, if we can do this in five minutes and then we'll talk.
Sure.
Okay. Excellent.
Okay.
So we, honestly, we just kinda, with the whole group, kinda just processed it. We're gonna have responses for you.
Yeah.
Next time. I think we got all, most of our initial concerns out.
Yep.
Earlier on, but we will bring forth any initial concerns along with official responses then.
Okey doke. Thank you. So that, that concludes this session.
All right.
And we'll see you next time, which is about four minutes. Ten minutes? Yeah. Okay. Sounds good. All right. If we were adjourned for a minute.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Adjourn for ten minutes. Thank you.
Rationale with the change of the start time for students and if that would stick because of the busing.
I don't know the answer to that. Would you be able to tell? I think what he's trying to say, if I may paraphrase, if you were to keep the seven-hour workday, what would that do to the starting and stop times for teachers and students?
The student start and stop time was with consideration to transportation.
Okay. All right. So I guess just for the sake of a counter to, you know, to fill in all the discussions at the table, obviously we kept a few here, would we want to just, I guess, as long as it fits the allotted staff hour, assume that the bus schedule is going to do what your original proposal said for student school time? Or should we, right now until the committee decides, which I know happens every year, or reconserves every year, should we keep it to the current and then let this committee do its contractual right to review?
We'll have an answer after we caucus, but I think I understand your concept.
Yeah.
You want to see where your work hours are shifting, which you seem to not be opposed to, as long as they stay seven hours.
Do you want to say anything to that? Because I think elementary might...
Yeah, like specifically looking at doing in Heathbrook and that time change. I know to the general public, a 15-minute difference might not be a big deal for the students. It really is. So I think the question is, if with the rejection of the hour, would our student hours stay the same? Or are you still looking to move those around for some reason otherwise?
Shifting them to bus.
I would actually say, are you looking to change staff start times even with the seven hour?
Right, within... And the kids.
And that could be a caucus question, but just something...
Well, I just want to make sure we're accurate, so give us a bit of time to...
Totally fine.
Make sure we have the right answer for you.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Okay, so to the next page, because of the hour, we rejected the change.
Connor, can I just clarify one thing? Is there, so you said that the membership overall is rejecting the extra hour work. Is there any sort of, any additional time that the membership will be willing to consider?
So, can I add a comment?
Anything above the current contractual day today?
So, I think Roseanne, I believe it was Roseanne, made the comment initially that to a certain degree, everyone understands that we already work additionally. And I think, I think the comment was, you'll be getting credit for it now, or something like that, like we'll be paid for it now.
Same contractual credit is what I said. In worst those effect, that effect.
Correct. So, I think to that point, there's already extra time that needs to be compensated for prior to any proposal about adding literal contractual extra time. Because that's just a non, it's, I'm going to be honest, a lot of people were insulted by the idea that being there longer was going to add anything to, like, benefit students or benefit their workload, when they're already doing it. It almost felt like a, well, we expect you to stay here, so now we're just going to stick it in the contract. Like, you're already doing it, so now we're going to make you hold to it. So that was a big factor in their response.
I, okay, I just want to, if I may, respond to that response. The idea was to address desire to be, together with other staff members to collaborate. And so we thought it might make sense to have your workday, non-instructional workday lengthened, to allow you to be sort of under the same roof, to do that for the collaboration. And it was not received in the way that it was intended, apparently, but that's kind of what the idea was. Okay? All right.
So to enter the direct question though, right? I obviously don't have unilateral power to say, I've talked to everyone in the membership but specifically. So obviously, we would need to talk to them, but I can tell you that I think the answer that I resolutely got from people and that our members of the bargaining team got resolutely was no.
Okay, well, you know, I know we're going to go off a little far afield before we get back on track with your responses, but one of the things that we had hoped to accomplish was to increase PLC time, but not at the expense of instructional time. And the only way that we could figure to do that was to, again, increase the contractual workday. But we hear you, we hear you. And that was the intent behind it.
Yep, fair enough. Peter, did you want to speak at all, more at all, the extra hour beyond this? Or did we make your points, basically?
Yeah, I feel like it was made.
Okay, because I know we talked about it. Okay, okay. Going to the PLC time, because of that hour going, we're rejecting that change to PLC. But I do want to say, you know, obviously, and we can talk about this more of a logistical way to go about it, we definitely have some commonalities of topics of proposals and how we want to do that, but we can revisit that later. We can discuss how we want to, like, not combine the proposals, I would say, but just make it so we're talking about the same thing.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? Okay, excellent.
You must have went over my shoulder five minutes ago, because I was like, wait, wait a sec. Wait a minute. Okay.
Yeah, I liked what you, I noticed what you did of the ESPs a little bit, like TTA's, oh yeah, nice, you know? Okay, excellent. I will say regarding the PLC right now, I think members right now feel the extra hour can be at times very redundant with what's going on. I think we're going to talk about that a little bit, because we have, I think there's another area of PLC that we're going to talk about, and we'll kind of elaborate what I mean by that. But for the time being, we're going down the way to the changes in sections B, D, and E. And I think that is all, just, that was a contingent idea beyond the extra hour a day. So because of that, we're rejecting them, right? And I know we do have language of our own regarding parent-teacher conferences that we can talk about once we hear your counters to our proposals, but, you know, I'm just saying right now, in regards to this, we're, you know, we're not going to try to take away things and then reject the hour, we're just saying that for the sake of the status quo, we're rejecting that. Okay. Going on to the next page, okay. This is the PLC one that I was just talking about. We are rejecting this in the idea that what we're talking about and in our own proposals is more autonomy in the PLC facilitators to be the professionals they were hired to be. And they know their teams or departments well, they know the challenge of their students. And at times, we can sometimes feel that we're doing programs in PLC that are not relevant at all. I think Deb will speak to that, and then Michelle.
Yep. As far as, I can speak to it directly from my own. I missed an entire year of medical leave, and I was concerned that with the things that got brought in by administration for PLCs that I'd be behind, I didn't miss anything. It was like the same thing over and over and over again.
I'm sorry, what is...
Does a disservice to the PLC leaders. They know what we need in the classroom, they know what we need extra help with, they know what we can benefit from. For me personally, I'm a math teacher, and I'm in charge of getting children to pass the MCAS. We don't have that time anymore to talk about, okay, well, children are not doing well on this or that, because we're being mandated to do all these other things. And I just think that adding this language in and adding this more time of mandated, you're going to do this, this, and this, is just going to be more detrimental than that whole piece.
And just to piggyback on that, I also have kind of a personal situation that happened in the, in our grade level, where we had four PLCs in a row, that we were told different people were coming in to present different, different things that they needed to present to us. So we are in a different position where the only time our grade level is all intact together is during PLC time. And we have a new reading program that we're rolling out, we have a new math initiative that we're still kind of working on, we have standard-based report cards. There are really a lot of things that we need to work together, and we lost four hours, an entire month of time where we could all sit together and work and work through those sort of things during that time. Oh, our PLC leader did reach out to certain members of the admin and ask if we could maybe compromise, if we combine a couple of these things, we weren't using four hours in a row, and we were just told it wasn't possible.
Anyone else for PLC at all?
Yeah, I'll just add in, to piggyback those points, you know, we hear a lot of what we think is sincere language from school committee and administrators about, you know, we have wonderful teachers in the district and, and our, you know, I've heard president of school committee members, our children are lucky to have our educators. But the proposals are taking away the autonomy of the great educators that you say that you have, and replacing it with fairly expensive outside PLC coordinator, you know, if you look at the contract. So it's, it really is difficult to kind of understand what is sincere and what isn't. I think I know, I think it's what you said, I think that's what, but that's not reflective in the faith in the educators to lead professionally their communities.
And I also have kind of a two-prong, so to go off of, the lecture's my own. So obviously, we speak to other towns, we will tell towns, like, oh, we're, you know, PLC, blah, blah, blah. And they argue, they're arguing with their school committees for more PLC time. And they'll say things like, well, how come you guys, how come it's not working? And it is mostly because for a lot of it, it's sucked up by these other programs that cost money and that drive our attention to a certain area. My PLC time was never more effective than when I could just sit in a room with the two other seventh-grade science teachers, and we could just go, hey, I need an activity for X. And we just got to sit there and troubleshoot and create and make an activity for X. We were like, this is great. And now, as soon as we try to do that, it's, oh, but you got to fill out this form, oop, but you got to do this PowerPoint, oop, but we're not done with this yet. And so it drains the creativity out of someone, and we are fighting to limit what other districts are fighting to expand specifically because of that and that concern. So I think putting that into perspective is valid in what we've all said here.
So we gave you a lot right there, so this, once again, is in the, with the and the turning into in collaboration with the.
But there's just one last thing I want to mention. There's a great book that addresses what motivates workers. It's called Drive. I recommend it to everybody. And professional autonomy and professional discretion is probably the single most important factor in terms of making workers have a sense of reward, productive, really good at what they do. You know, companies, a lot of companies have carved out days where it's entirely up to the workers what they, what they do, you figure it out. And that people feel, they feel a lot better in their workplace, they feel trusted, they feel more motivated, and that's going to be a kind of a theme throughout these negotiations. You know, the folks here, they're, they're degreed, they've gone through a lot of training, and they'd like to be able to, you know, to put that to use.
So I know that allows that, about that one change there. Do we have any questions or comments from your side before we move on?
Not yet.
I do, I do want to give, like, an example of something that was good, that we're kind of looking for in our PLC, that the district gave during our last PD session, at least for the secondary schools, is they gave us a lot of freedom and a lot of autonomy to explore what we needed, and then to work with our colleagues to get it done. And I will say, based on the secondary response that I heard at the Wynn, the Ryan, and the high school, that was really well-liked, extremely appreciated, and we're trying to take that example, and we're trying to make that our PLC. That way, we can push forward based on what we know we need on a day-to-day basis, without all of that, in this case, I'll call it red tape, kind of getting in our way.
Josh, that's exactly what I was thinking, as I'm listening to what you're saying. It made me reference your last PD, so I have your answer.
Moving down, we accept...
We will, I'm sorry, we will have a response to you. I just need to speak with the administrators, because I don't have that information at my fingertips, but I'm sure you can appreciate that there is a definite, deliberate, and thoughtful approach to PLC topic selection, and whoever the district uses for outside speakers and stuff. I'm expecting to come back to you after our caucus and give you the perspective of the administration about why it is meaningful information, and it's a meaningful endeavor. But go ahead.
I look forward to it. Thank you. Okay, next one. We are accepting the language change, except for the last sentence, and that concerns the high school department leaders. And we are countering to department leaders at grades nine to 12, facilitate the department PLCs. The rationale behind this is, the language we read in your initial proposal seemed to maybe say that there could be this PLC leader for this group of high school teachers, but it may not necessarily be by content, and, you know, we really are organized at the high school by our content that we teach, right? Like, teams at elementary, all the way up to grade eight here, you know, me and my English colleagues, myself, and that's where we really get talking to each other. So that, that's why we put that counter language in.
Can, sorry, Connor, can I just get, so the blue is your, is your addition?
Yes, it's our counter.
Okay.
Yep.
And what you stripped out was, the strikeouts are, the strikeouts to our...
I'm not going to lie to you, I think I might have forgot to strike out what you added.
Okay.
Does that make sense? That was a mistake on my end.
You, you put back in that sentence about...
Yeah, I think what I did was, like, countered the sentence, but didn't, yeah. But yes, the strikeout was your original strikeout that we're agreeing to. Okay. Going down the way, and this is, this starts the discussion that we have, Roseanne, we already have, and the TTA has its own PLC proposed language, and we'd like to continue to discuss this with the school committee bargaining team. And then we accepted the language regarding the 2019, 2020 language and section G. Going to the next page. You added, you proposed to add, in the event that Good Friday falls on the Friday before Aprilification, the half-day before Aprilification will be scheduled on the Thursday before Good Friday, we accept that language. Going along the way, school counselors. This was the days over the summer. I emailed out to the adjustment counselors and guidance counselors I had at all the grade levels on the email database, and while there is a practice, and there absolutely is a practice, we'll acknowledge that, that guidance and adjustment counselors at times do go in for a day to maybe up to three days over the summer, they're not comfortable putting the mandatory three in. There's a bunch of reasons they gave me. They, you know, some people said the work they do at times can be done in those first two days, others said while they will go in if need be for, for instance, at the high school level regarding, I think it's, I think it's Common App, the Common App kickoff, you know, they know, they know that we have appropriate place for them to be, but they were not comfortable from the feedback, and I would say pretty resoundingly, and I did have a pretty critical conversation with quite a few of them about it, you know, entertaining a lot of different things, but they concluded with me they were not comfortable putting any language in regarding the summer, and they were to reject it.
I'm sorry, is it optional right now?
I think it's just a practice that they, you know, most of them will come in.
Okay.
Going down to section four with the preschool, we put a hold on this and a discussion at the table, let me just kind of reread this to get myself reoriented here. I guess, I think we just wanted to know more of your rationale with crossing that out, if we could. I think that's what we wanted here.
Can I ask you? Excuse me? Yep. All right, we'll, we'll have to talk about it a little bit. I'll get an answer for you after we caucus.
Going down the way, we rejected the deduction of time midday for the preschool teachers. And then going down to C, I think we just wanted to hear the rationale, we wanted to hold here for changing bus to student arrival and dismissal duty.
I think we wanted to make it clear that bus duty, the supervision of kids as they arrive and leave school is not just bus duty, it's anybody arriving by whatever means to school and leaving by whatever means. So we just wanted to make it clear that it's student supervision, it's not necessarily bus duty. It's not an expansion of the time commitment, it's just an understanding that it's, it's more than just the bus.
Excellent. Going down to section A right there, calculations of such time will be during the student workday, we accepted that language. Onto the calculation of times, this will include the 30 minutes before the start time. We rejected that language, we find that language to be pretty important, so we rejected it. Going to kindergarten teachers, shall receive 25 minutes of duty-free lunch and whatnot, we accepted that language change. And we also accepted the language change under letter B, which is including kindergarten. Onto the next page. Like I said, the theme of us maybe starting to combine this and we can work on this together, the TTA's language regarding the parent-teacher conferences, and would like to continue discussing with the school committee unit.
Right, and I just need to make it clear that our striking of that was contingent on the eight-hour workday. Remember that?
No, that made complete sense. Yeah, that's why I wanted to hold this, like, you know, kind of combine these together.
You bet.
Absolutely, yep. Time change from the grid above, we apply to the language again with the Ryan Upper Elementary School, this means teachers will now work seven hours total, this will equal with other buildings. We, we rejected this language. We didn't quite see why this would be needed, especially with deleting the seven-hour guarantee right there. Letter G, the TTA, we talked, we talked about this all together, and I know the Ryan school does not currently have a librarian, and...
Neither do we.
We also do under, is that correct?
Yeah, neither, neither do we.
In the way, okay. So, along with that, we want to reject getting rid of it for the day, we, members we talk to do find value in librarians, and obviously, we're not proposing you have to hire them, but if they ever are rehired again, or the district deems it, just like they did with the elementary schools with the media specialists, we didn't want to say get rid of that, because it could become relevant once again. Going down the way, we rejected the language change, we think it's very important to define what blocks are being worked. The Ryan, teammate Justin, the Wynn all have that, and deleting it would essentially let things change on a whim of how the school functions, instead of being negotiated. Going down the way to L.
I think I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think that wasn't trying to make everything change on a whim, I think it was more to afford teachers some flexibility in, you know, this block, this subject has to stop at such and such a clock. You know, it's, it's more to allow kind of flexibility, to allow for better flow of lessons being implemented.
Okay. Anyone, you respond for anyone on that? Josh?
Sorry?
Some of our members expressed concerns that even if that was the intent, it wouldn't necessarily get used that way, and that it would give us less of a chance to express what we would like potentially in the buildings. And I think, you know, a lot of people would just prefer that we keep that as a negotiated part of our contract.
Right now, letter L, in the current contract, is each academic team will develop instructional block schedules, such as focus and SSR blocks, in consultation with the building principal, and the proposal was, the building principal shall develop the instructional schedules in collaboration with the academic teams. Same rationale, we rejected the language. We like some sort of, you know, the language that's laid out currently in the contract. The Wynn, letter G, this is the same rationale we just gave you with the Ryan, of the rejection of that language. New letter, I understand what, but current letter H, crossing out, the academic team will develop instructional blocks in consultation with the building principal, the building principal shall develop the instructional schedules in collaboration with academic teams. We are countering that with, if a majority of staff would like to see a change in the schedule, a committee will be formed at the building to develop different schedule options. Any final decision would result in the bargaining between both parties. All right, going to letter I, lunch duty, breakfast duty, and bus duty. We did reject that language. Would anyone from the Wynn like to speak about that specifically, or the rationale at all? Addition of breakfast duty? You don't have to, but... Okay, okay, Josh, go.
There were concerns about not having specific parameters on what that included and what they'd be responsible for. So having that in there was a concern to some members regarding kind of what the expectations would kind of rise to.
Are there specific parameters now on lunch duty?
I think, I think so.
Yeah.
In terms of, you know, the lunch, lunch duty you said, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, being kind of, we'll say relatively new compared to lunch duty, there were some kind of concerns about differences there. And it really is kind of a, it's a different animal, lunch duty and breakfast duty in many ways.
Going on to the next page. Along with the, before the beginning of the school year, the building principal shall issue the schedule for faculty meetings, PLC meetings, and duties. We countered with, before the beginning of the school year, the building principal shall issue a schedule for faculty meetings and duties, which may be subject to change based on building needs. We then countered with, by September 15th, PLC meetings will be decided by PLC facilitators and reported to the building principal. We feel this is pretty reflective of what happens now. Firstly, I think it's good for members to know when they're, if they will have duties or whatnot, when they'll be, on the beginning of school. And the September 15th is a hard date for PLC facilitators, so they can't kick the can down the road and not ever report it to a building principal, right? But it gives that two weeks or so for the group that the times and schedules are going to affect can mutually agree on, you know, when to have their PLC. I'll give you a little, you know, experience here, my English PLC, every year by September 15th, we all decide, you know, what day, what day is good for us, what times, and there are members who, math games don't work, and instead of having someone not, who attends those PLCs, tell us when to do it, it would be much better for the democratic decision by the PLC and then the PLC facilitator, ensuring that the building principal understands Going down to the department chairperson, we can even go to the next page too, because it's all the same, we're rejecting the both. Our department chairs, they do a lot for our departments, or department leaders, as we're going to be calling them, and I want Jill to discuss this of the duties that department chair, leaders here.
So I met with all of the other current, sorry, Joanne, can you, sorry, I just wanted you to have my... I met with all the other current lead teachers and department heads, soon to be department leaders, and I have a huge list of the things that we do during that block, but just to kind of sum up some really big points, so I don't bore you all day. We are in charge of all the department courses and the curriculum and scheduling and everything that comes with that. We collaborate with the administration and then bring that back to our departments for any school-wide policy changes, anything like that. With the extra block, it gives us more availability to our department, so we're more likely to have a shared prep with the people in our department, and we just have that availability for them, because they, you know, we work with our departments on a number of things.
Thank you. All right. Going down the way, once again, same rationale here as the other ones. We have language regarding the parents and teachers, so we just, we're holding on that so we could then kind of hammer that out. Unit members may be asked to serve as chaperons and supervisors at extracurricular activities. The way the language is currently said is, any unit member may be asked to serve as a chaperone during extracurricular activities, and the expectation would be, you know, if they're asked, if they are asked, they will serve. So because of that potential interpretation, we are rejecting it, especially at the high school level, we actually rarely, if ever, have a problem with people stepping up to chaperone, and we're going to get more into that when we talk about the stipend in a bit. Going down to the cost of living, same thing, the TTA has cost of living increases, and on our own proposals, we figured right now, get through this language. We figured right now, get through this language, hold that and discuss it. The next one, the original proposal is appendix B duties will be performed outside of contractual teacher hours. We countered with while many appendix B duties shall be performed outside of contractual teacher hours, there will also be times where appendix B roles will be necessary to be carried out during the school day. A great example is our department leaders at the high school. They're carrying out their appendix B roles all the time. I'm a club advisor myself, and students during their lunch may be selling or doing a fundraiser. I might need to go down and help them with that. There's a member of our building who, they do a blood drive. She's in here all day because our students need to be safe. There's blood being drawn, kind of gross. And she needs to be here. That's a duty she's carrying out with her appendix B position during the school day, right? So we understand the rationale here, but we don't want to box ourselves in that people with appendix B stipends even think of field trips, right, that sometimes do bleed into the school day. We don't want to box them out of being able to accomplish what the students want to do. We accepted the change to firm news paper advisor to media advisor for student news. And then we just want to hear the rationale from literacy magazine to media advisor for student creative arts, along with detention supervisor to restorative justice coordinator. The reason why is any title change like this could potentially change the expectations of that stipend. And those holders of that appendix B position should probably know that. If you need to caucus about that rationale, that's totally fine.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Staff chaperoning, student teams will pay the teacher hourly rate. A process for advisor approval of said, this is a counter, of said chaperones will be established overnight countering, oh, countering, chaperoning will be paid for every hour. So few things going on here in the counter. One is with, in regards to the chaperoning, what is the practice right now for most appendix Bs is the advisors actually are the ones that either themselves or their students reach out to acquire chaperones, right? So that's why we put the process for advisor approval. And then overnight chaperoning, I'm going to turn it to Erin on this one. So Erin, go ahead.
Yeah, so for the, for the last, let's say, four or five years or so, I've done the DECA trip with Mr. Sullivan, and it is a great experience. But anytime a staff member volunteers to do any sort of chaperoning, we're putting ourselves up for liability. We're watching students overnight in a hotel for two nights. And I feel like compensation is warranted there. And Deb also does the same with student council. They go away for a conference every year. And while some of the time is time, I would be in school for DECA, like on Friday, but I'm there. Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday day and afternoon, all at my own volition. So curious how much you would be paying that stipend and what you would consider for people who are taking that added liability of an overnight trip.
Caucus on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Going down to these smaller bullets. The language as academic positions are teacher leadership roles. The individuals holding these stipend positions may be expected to perform duties outside the teacher work year. We're going to reject it, but the practice is there, department chairs or department leaders now. For instance, you know, if, if someone resigns in like June or early July, they come in, they make sure they can do it. However, opening the scope to possible roles that, I guess what I'm saying, this opens the scope to pulling this academic advisor to help with whatnot. A duty that could be seen as loosely related to the stipend they hold. And that's kind of our rationale here. Consolidate department heads and lead teachers. We accept. Department leaders with that stipend, we accept. Department leaders will have full teaching schedules. Like Jill said, there's a lot of duties we reject. Mentee stipend, we really discussed this, we went back and forth here. As right now, as of right now, we'd like to keep it in. It does, members do look at, not members, potential hires do look at contracts. And let's be real, we want to retain the best. Sometimes that does kind of perk some people up if they have a few offers going on, like, oh, I've been through this mentor program three times. I got to do it again because of the legal obligation of the state that puts on all districts. But there's some money there. Regarding the four and a half case managers, we'd like to hold as the number of case managers may need to change with student enrollment. So I guess we're holding for now, hearing, maybe after caucus if we can get a better rationale on the four and a half case managers too, why that exact number. We just wanted to hold. And then same with the last one. Case managers will be removed from appendix B. We just want to hold and get more information from you all.
Okay. All right.
So we could do a few things. We could, if you want to, if you wanted to give us responses right now, we could both caucus, or if you want to caucus so you can discuss this, then come back, do the Q and A, then give counters to us. We're amenable to either one.
We have some counters to your proposals.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. And some of them, I'm seeing that we're, based on your counters, these may, your response to them might be self-evident at the moment. But that's okay. We'll get through. We will get to yes. Yes, we will.
We will.
I think I have to say it is encouraging to have seen the proposals from, you know, our side, your side. All are addressing a lot of the same issues, so.
Yeah.
That is true.
The real question is how do we get the right solution?
Yeah, I agree.
It's encouraging that we're all on the same page.
I'm just getting my document of the original proposals. My scribbles all over it. No. I should be not hogging up this whole table, but I am. All right. Okay, so. All right, so this obviously reflects the counters, but I just want to go back over our, where we stand on all of your proposals right now, so everybody's clear. We had rejected your proposal, number one, because of the impact of a half day on student learning time. The PLC, you'll see through our counter that on the PLC language that you proposed, we are rejecting your first proposal to have... It sounds like you want complete autonomy over the PLCs and that you are trying to have the contract prohibit the use of an outside agency. We do reject that. I think we're, we need to bridge our gap in understanding because we're kind of far apart on this concept of, of the PLC. Who decides what, you know, what PLC's content is going to be? But obviously, as you probably know, part of the administration's job is not only to consider what you need in your individual classroom, but what the district needs as a whole and how, what, and how PLCs can serve district goals. A lot of those goals, you know, they do have to do with things that do involve your classroom, but not only your classroom. So, and part of an administrator's job is to supervise you, you know? So they will need to engage in that supervision. So I see that we need to have further conversation on this.
What do you mean by supervise?
Well, I should probably expand that. Not only to supervise, but to, to aid in your professional growth. That's what, that's what administrators do. They help you, they help make you a great teacher. You know, like you're a great teacher now, but they even improve you beyond that. They, they partner with you to help to make that happen, and that's part of their job. So to remove any of their control, so to speak, over what the content of a PLC is or even when it is scheduled within a day, I'm not sure we can meet you all the way over there with that. But let's, let's talk further. But for the moment, we'll have to reject that language that completely takes the autonomy of the administration away.
I just have a question regarding the time piece. Have you considered that in each department, there are different people who do different things outside of teaching? Like my department, at one point, I would say six of the nine of us were coaches. So meeting after school really was not feasible. And had our principal at the time said we were meeting after school, what were we going to do? So as a department, we meet in the morning, and it is what works well for us. And I don't see why having a principal choose that would make the PLC any more efficient or better.
How should I put this? They, of course, if you suggest, like, we want to meet at X time, if there's no reason to say no to that, they won't say no to that. But if there's a reason that it has to be moved around because of other demands on the scheduling of the school at large, maybe they'll have to work with you to figure out other times. My point is, it sounds like you're making the schedule, the principals are saying, okay, fine. But they have to have latitude if they need it to figure out another time.
Could you give me an example of a time?
I don't know. I'm not too familiar with what times you're plugged in with PLCs, but I don't know. Let's, I can't even think of one off the top of my head.
Either 30 minutes twice per week, like.
Right, or 60, right.
Yeah. So maybe when you caucus, if you could.
Yeah, I will, as I said, I don't, I'm not a PLC participant, but I certainly will get you some clarification.
If I could speak to the point about our principals, you know, need to supervise us, and part of their job is to make us better teachers and to that point.
Partner with you to be better teachers, right.
Right, yep. Josh had mentioned how well received the autonomy that we had. I think due in large part to collaboration between the TTA and Lori McDermott when we came back from break. I had communication with Ms. McDermott prior to that. My license is coming up in 2025, and you have to track the PDPs, many, all of which are determined in terms of from the district. The district determines what they offer me. I always, always have the option to go out and get more, of course, at my own expense, and the district can compensate.
Sure.
It was revealed that despite the rising number of English, English language learners in the district, the district had provided exactly zero ELL, PDP, SEI, PDPs over three years. And I had never had an option to do it. Then, within the school, within the school, what the school offered. So I, I challenge that the district can actually look at the individual teachers' needs and say, well, you know, Mr. Malloy needs this, and Ms. Noel needs that, and they've got a, the district administrators have a lot to do. I can't, I cannot imagine it. And to be able to be that granular and that micromanaged, I can tell you, didn't happen. I, I am coming up on an expiring contract, expiring license, and I need to hustle to get my PDPs for SEI.
Right.
That autonomy that I was afforded allowed me to do that.
Right.
And I was able to obtain my SEI PDPs because I received autonomy.
Right.
Because nobody is responsible for my license but me.
That is correct. That's correct.
So when the district determines and manages, micromanages the PD that we receive, it locks us in in terms of our own free time, which, based on proposals, are looking to take away a bit added time, it locks us in as to when we can actually re-license.
What I was addressing was PLCs, not PD.
But PLCs. PLCs are directly connected to that because we don't have the freedom and the autonomy. And the autonomy is helpful, whether it's for our own PD, whether our own license, or within PLC. We know what we need. And when given the autonomy, we, we actually overachieve. We don't just get it. We don't meet the bar. We far exceed it.
Right. Okay, so I understand the, the desire for more autonomy. But what I'm saying to you is we may not get all the way there to completely ceding any administrative oversight in this exercise of PLCs. That's all, that's all I was saying.
Roseanne, may I? So I just, based on what was said earlier in here, currently it says mutually agreed upon, right, between administrator and PLC facilitator. I just heard an example in this room tonight that PLC leaders went to an administrator asking if there could be flexibility in a half hour here, a half hour this, and the answer was no. To me, that's not mutually agreed upon at all. So that makes it a little scarier for us.
Yeah, well.
To put kind of the cap you guys were looking for, but I understand that you're saying you can't come all the way.
Right, that, yes, yes. We're kind of at polar, polar distance here with our perspective. So anyway, I guess it's fair to say that you reject our proposal, we reject your proposal. Okay, moving on. And again, we did reject the piece of it that would, would have a half day to accommodate PLC time. We talked about that. We're, we're loathe to cut into instructional time. The, the, the next paragraph, as you can see, we have a counter as to the, who would serve as a PLC facilitator? And we are adding some, the net effect of this is there will be more PLC facilitators in this design. And this is not contingent, this, who will be PLC leaders is not contingent on the length of the workday. This will, this is kind of separate from that issue. And the voluntary transfer language, we did come up with a counter that we hope satisfies the concerns that you have about.
Can I, I'm so sorry. Can I ask a quick question? So I'm just skim reading, but like, most of the way down the page, like the second to last red line you have, you have note, district level directors will facilitate their respective PLCs. Who is that? Like, who is the, a district level director?
Well, I think it says these groups include literacy and reading, STEM and counseling.
Right, but like, I know who the head of STEM is in the, like, I know who holds that title, but does that mean that that admin person is also then the PLC facilitator?
They facilitate the PLC meetings. They don't fall under the appendix B position of the PLC facilitator currently.
Okay, so then if we follow that route, if, so like, I have a STEM teacher at my school. I have two STEM teachers at my school, right? So right now, they fall under the specialist PLC, and they have a PLC facilitator. So under this idea, would that STEM teach, those STEM teachers be like, removed from the specialist PLC? And now their facilitator would be the admin person, like the center admin person who's the director of STEM?
I think we'd have to collaborate with those directors to hear where this is coming from.
Okay.
But I, I don't think so, no. I don't, I don't think that was the piece.
Okay, okay. I'm just wondering, okay.
But we'd have to ask them.
Okay.
Question, sorry. I don't see any special education in here.
Right. So the thinking behind that is special educators, they don't teach special education. There's special ed teachers who teach content, right? So they are certainly, and they do serve as PLC facilitators now. Do some of them do that? Certainly, they would be able to be appointed a PLC facilitator, and they will be included in, you know, among these, these groupings, if you will. I'm not sure what the, I keep turning to you, but I'm not sure what, would they split their time between PLCs depending on?
We'd have to ask the principals.
All right, we'll ask the principals in caucus, but yeah, it's, it's, to have a special ed PLC, we thought it made more sense at least to have them be a member of a, sort of a content or a grade level PLC, not a special ed PLC. Do you know what I'm saying? Because they don't, they teach content.
Well, but they also teach special education-specific topics, like executive functioning and their academic support goals and all those types of things.
Right, right. That's true. So we'll get some more feedback from the principals about how they fit into this. But no, we are not proposing to have a PLC, a special ed PLC, like standalone. It's to be kind of included in, you know, the others.
Excuse me, before we move on, hi.
Hi.
I just wanted to kind of, I have, thank you. I just wanted to kind of echo what Emily Noel was saying. As a STEM teacher at the K-1 level, I just appreciate the thought of having a unified arts PLC, and I just hope that the STEM teachers and digital literacy teachers in with the unified arts would be still a part of the unified arts PLC for a number of reasons. But it sounds like that is going to get clarified.
I believe that's the intent.
In caucus. Awesome, thank you.
Great. Yeah, so if we're ready to move on, we can talk about this transfer language. This is our.
Just a question.
Yeah.
So if the proposal number is not on here, are we just, was that, are they either being held or are they just rejected?
We'll get to that.
Okay.
I have my cheat sheet, I'll get to that in a moment. Okay, so what we did with our counter format was, we took the original language of the contract and made our changes, instead of changing your changes.
Okay.
Because it got all like, what color am I, what color are you, what are we, underlining, crossing out? So we, so I'm kind of side by side comparing what you want to do with that language and what we countered with, desiring for transfer to another da-da-da, submit a request, this is the existing language, but then we have an additional submit, update a resume, letter of intent required on the posting. And then the rest of it just stays the same. We are not comfortable having seniority decide who receives a transfer in the event of multiple requests. There's more factors, there's a lot of factors that go into whether a transfer of this person versus that person is the appropriate, you know, appropriate move. It may not, it may not have anything to do with, this person's a great teacher, this person's not a good teacher. There's so many factors that go into whether a transfer makes sense or not. So we cannot have something that absolutely says seniority decides. Just, we can't be restricted like that. It's, it's not, it's not, at the end of the day, it's way too restrictive.
And I'm skimming very quickly, and it sounds like you also, it's the same, it's like, considered before interviewing other people, so you also can't agree to the language we proposed as far as they will be granted that transfer before it opens up to the outside?
Yeah, again, I, the district should be able to post it and, you know, see if there's an applicant on the outside that is a better fit for that particular position. No insult intended, but they need to be able to, you know, see whether there's, there's a better match. One minute, please, I'm just looking at. Yeah, I'm sorry, hold on a minute. Yeah, there's still the foremost consideration that we're not obviously proposing to change. So I think the foremost consideration is, is, it compels the administrator to seriously take a look at the person applying. But at the end of the day, the principal may make a decision that it's just not the right fit, for whatever reason. And if, and if an administrator, well, just nevermind, I think I explained it. We do have some counter language to the academic coach proposal. So if you, I think we, I don't think we would want to put in the contract the exact coaches' positions that we're going to create and staff, because that's a managerial prerogative there. And I think in letter B, we do both agree that it's a flexible schedule based on the nature of the job. It's a teacher-supportive job, and then scheduling will be developed, adapted, and communicated to, by the appropriate director. Again, as you can see, we're trying to keep in mind big picture, how it fits into the big picture. And then the supervision and evaluation. The person evaluating the academic coach may be the director, but it may be somebody else. So we just wanted to make sure there was that flexibility. And then, if you flip to page three.
Oh, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
The part where you cross out on letter B, right?
Yep.
You cross out the part where it says, allows coaches to meet with teachers. But right now, I can request a coach to, like, come in, meet with me, and like, how does this work? How does that work? Can you help me troubleshoot? It's like, so by taking that out, we would now not be able to meet with coaches?
Not necessarily. I think we need to make sure that it falls in line with the instructional demands that teachers have.
Right, but we left in support. So supportive roles would then all be, like, over there, like, not student-facing, not student-interacting, not teacher-interacting to say. So it's kind of changing what they even do now to put in just to support.
And keep in mind, the current language, as you can see, it just allows, it allows coaches to meet with, to meet. So if that language is.
This isn't, this language is all new.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, what they do right now is, part of it is to meet with us.
Right.
So let's say this sentence is, you know, makes it through, then that's not a thing anymore? They don't meet with us, they only offer supportive roles, like, off in the distance?
Wouldn't the next sentence say, the flexibility allows coaches to meet with teachers?
Right, but if it's out of one to support, like, then that's not a foremost part of their job?
Can I?
Yeah.
Would you?
Okay.
Only because I was, I heard this conversation. It, meet with is one way a coach supports teachers, and that was limiting. So meet with, model, there's many different ways a coach supports the teacher. So that was the intention.
Okay.
To not limit it to one thing.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? This you might need to discuss me back. I'm just curious, who else would be evaluating the coaches if not the director, STEAM director or the literacy director? I'm just curious who that looks like.
To meet with to support.
All we're saying is, it shouldn't be limited to the director.
Right, so I'm just looking for if there's, when you guys caucus.
Yep.
Who else would that be if they're the coaches that fall under them? I'm just wondering.
Yep, that's a good question. And then we just wanted to make it clear that academic coaches are educators for the purposes of the Appendix E evaluation system, but the rubrics will have to be adapted a little bit, because they don't really make a lot of sense in totality when you put them, you know, so you have to adjust and adapt them. And then we thought we would be, I don't know, we propose a little different spin on the length of workday or work hours, so we adjusted your paragraph on that a little bit. And then we, again, on the F, well, now our F is a little bit different way of saying that their schedules are a little different than a teacher who directly faces students, but theirs, as with teachers, the academic coach will be expected to attend meetings outside of the regular contractual day. And no, we didn't specify or itemize every single instance. And then we reworded the part about the planning and facilitating PD workshops, and we are making every effort to provide at least 30 days' notice before presentation date, but it might be 29 days, you know, but they'll do their best, obviously, to give advance notice. It's in everybody's best interests. And then on I, we understand that the intent is absolutely not to be substitute teacher when a teacher is absent, but we wanted to make it clear that when a long-term sub essentially steps into the role of the teacher, their coach's job is to also support them as if they were a permanent teacher. So hopefully those modifications make sense to you.
Can you speak a little bit to, in letter I, coaches shall not, or shall collaborate with classroom teacher?
Um, it, it's probably, in our estimation, it might be redundant of the support language that's previous in this section.
So it's not supporting the strikeout to meet with? That was just?
No, no, no. I think we probably thought it was captured already in a previous subsection, and then we, of course, we all agree that it's not, the intent is not to plug in a coach to substitute.
We were trying to make this not read like a job description and more contractual language.
Yeah. Thank you, well played.
My heart dropped first.
No, 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 no.
Well, can I, can I ask one more point about that?
Sure.
Okay, so this is going to combine with my earlier question, which maybe I did not explain fully.
I'm sure you did.
So to Dave's point, there is the sentence that says, coaches will meet with teachers. I think my point was, coach, so the sentence that you cross out is, flexibility allows coaches to meet with, to support the teacher the teacher's needs. The sentence you left in, or put in, is to meet the admin needs. And then when you go to the point that Jamie just mentioned, we're stop, we're striking the point where they specifically are there to collaborate with the classroom teacher. So it does give off this impression that the coaches are there to facilitate pushing out admin's desired outcome, and not to help the person standing in front of the clear touch to deliver instruction. I think that, maybe that's a better way of explaining my earlier point. It's about whose needs they're supporting, not necessarily that, like, I trust that they'll be there, right, and that they'll answer my emails and things like this. But it comes down to, who are they supporting? Are they helping with the projects of admin? Or are they there to help me do better in my classroom with all the stuff that's coming out and all the new, new things? Does that make more sense?
Maybe, I think the, the language that's in black type is you proposed.
No, I know, but you cut out the part where then we, we meet with them for art, it was just to support. It's not really the, like, supporting teachers through what the admin desires to be a need is, that's a different thing.
So just to point a clar, so the language that you had proposed in that same B says to meet with teachers as needed and support supervisor needs?
No, I, yes, I, I'm going to come up with a better way to explain my, sorry, I'm going to come up with a better way to explain it, because I'm, sorry.
I understand too, what we should.
No, it's okay, I'll come up with a better way to word it.
Emily, if it helps, just to give, because you're not in the group, you're not in this building, so to give a little context, over the past year, I, I have a coach that I work closely with, and I think I've noticed the coaches being a lot more involved in PLC, data collection and presentation, PDs. So I think when I read this, I also wonder, are they shifting to more of an administrative support role rather than a teacher support role? And certainly, I think they, I know they can do many things, but I know they can't do it all. So I think that's, maybe, Emily, am I?
Yes, that is, yes. Thank you, Jamie, that was lovely.
So, yeah, so it doesn't really change much, the concepts that we, the concepts that you intended to convey, we think are still coming through in our proposed counter Obviously, the reason, a coach coaches the teacher. They don't coach the admin. But, that being said, administrators, again, they do supervise the work of the coach, and the coach, obviously, is, is coaching teachers as part of the team, right? But the, the language that we're talking about right now, I don't know that our language changes the concept or the spirit or the intent of what you had proposed in the first place.
If I can, the desire is the same.
Yeah.
The desire from the admin and the teacher would be to use a coach to support instruction and learning, student learning. I don't think those desires would be any different.
Okay.
And that's what the coach is currently doing. I think the elementary people just recently had a coach in a data meeting with the administrator to, and the goal was to support what the data says students need and share strategies for the teachers. So there was, I think, the common desire, not something different.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to our counter to your proposal number seven about related, well, you said speech and language, we thought we might broaden it to related service providers who would be included in this, students. So the first, the changes under the first letter A are in light of the fact that we'd like to have it applied to all related service providers. And then B, same thing. We did kind of change up the C and the D. So we get it that if an administrator pulls you from your prep, if an administrator pulls you from your prep block, well, actually, let me put it differently. You don't have to give up your prep to make up a student session because the student session had to be canceled at the behest of an administrator. The, we did strike out the language proposing to say that if a session is canceled, you're not responsible to make up the session. Now, before alarm bells go off, I didn't mean to say that you are responsible, and if, if an administrator throws a wrench into your schedule, then now that's on you for the missed service. That's not what we meant. What we meant was, there may be an ability to find some time to make up the session in a, in an individual, related service provider's day. What do I mean by that? Some days, you may not have a full complement of student sessions. In those instances, you could plug in a service, you know, a rescheduling for a student. But if it's not possible to squeeze it in, like, nope, I'm booked full, and, you know, we're going to have to figure something else out, then of course, you are guaranteed, per this language, your prep. That's a contractual guarantee, we get that. Students are entitled to their IEP services, we get that too. But if you can reschedule in a time that doesn't take away your prep, then do that. If not, administration will figure something else out. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have your counters, we have our counters. We probably need to caucus to talk about things. Before we do that, though.
Do you want to touch base on any other proposals or no?
Well, we could, yeah, just to be clear on what other, where we stand with regard to all your other proposals. Yeah, we can just run through that quickly. All right, so we did talk about one and two, prep time, oh, we were on the PLCs and then I got sidetracked, okay. We, on your proposal number three, again, we rejected the notion of cutting into student instructional time to allow for extra prep. We talked about your proposal number four, that kind of cut down on duties. We had talked at length at a previous session about our position that it's valuable to have educators at duties. We reject your proposal on that basis. We did talk about proposal number five, transfer, we just gave you our counter to that. Number six, district-wide coaches, we just gave you our counter to that. Number seven, about the speech-language pathologists-related service providers, we countered to that. We reject the proposal about class sizes.
That's number eight, right?
Yeah, your proposal number eight. We all understand, I think we all can agree, that if you're able to maintain a certain level of class sizes, that's a great goal, but sometimes staffing just doesn't allow it. So we can't, we can't box ourselves into that contractual obligation because we So we can't, we can't box ourselves into that contractual obligation because we fear there might be a day when we just can't meet it. Given that, the district works very hard to, you know, keep class sizes at a feasible number. They work very hard to do that. We are rejecting the proposal number nine about special education texting time. I think right now, where, there's a situation where you can't schedule a student test during a time that's free. If necessary to make all the pieces fit, you'll get release time. But to memorialize it in the contract is, again, it's, this doesn't fit into all the other pieces that are, that are in play with covering students, making sure everybody, every base is covered. Let's see, student passing time. We understand where you were coming from with this, but we're rejecting this.
Is this 11? I'm so sorry.
11, no, no, number 10, student passing time, I'm sorry. I think there's a philosophical difference on what passing time represents. At the younger grades, the district administration feels that that is instructional. Kids are learning things when they line up, when they know how to get from A to B. It is instruction in and of itself. Proposal number 11, safe and appropriate learning environment. Rooms occupied by educators equipped with functioning air conditioning. These are sort of like capital items that really don't belong in a contract to have air, and plus to have air conditioning. I think we need to talk about what it costs to provide air conditioning in school buildings. And I do think that there was some HVAC work that was done or is bid out.
Yeah, we just received bids on Ryan and Wynn Classroom Wings. We wanted to, with Esser Money, we had proposed addressing the filtration and overall air quality in the classroom areas where students and staff spend most of their time. And pricing came in at the Wynn at, it was 3.8 million, and the Ryan was 3.5 million for just the classroom areas of those schools.
I just wanted to have Dave mention, how much Esser Money was available to put to those costs?
We had a million in the grant. We're going to propose an amendment to the grant to add another 300,000 that we had available.
Still short a great deal. Was there a question?
Not a question, just a statement. So I work in this building. This is my eighth year. I just changed classrooms this year. Prior to that, I was in a room that had no air conditioning. It would get incredibly hot. The room next to me used to be occupied by my department head. He since has moved to the other side to a room that does have AC. And I just wanted to be noted that when the center school was being redone and administrative personnel was in our building, the district did make a point to put an AC unit in that building. They did the electrical work. They put in new plugs. They put in a new window. So those adults could have a comfortable working environment. But for the other adults who are in that building all year round, year after year, it was not made a priority. And now that room sits unoccupied and is full of desks and unused things. But we did have the money to make that room air-conditioned for those adults and not students. So not a question, just a point I wanted to make.
It's a great point. As of, at least October, I haven't been in there since then, the air conditioner was still in there, sitting in the window, unused, unmoved. So it's.
A window air conditioner is not.
It's a difference.
Close to what?
Right. No, no, right.
A project of a central air.
So it might be, it might be a bit more affordable?
Yeah. I think the point just was that when certain individuals were in an uncomfortable working environment, money was found and changes were made and other times.
Who work in, who work in July and August.
I, okay, I have done summer school for the last 10-plus years, and I do it in that classroom right over there, Ms. Scarper's room. And there is no air conditioning in there. And when I do that, that is with some of our highest needs, special ed students. So I also work in the summer in, on air-conditioned rooms.
I would also push back that stop of comfort about student safety and learning. And I can attest to you right now, July and August, September is just as bad now. It's getting hotter. And it is, it can be a really challenging time to engage students in learning at all when it's sweltering. And there have been medical incidences happening with our students.
Okay. Well.
And that's why we're taking steps to address it.
Yeah. And to put this in a three-year contract, like, boom, right out the gate, you have to come up with the capital to do all these things, the district just, that's not sustainable, you know?
Is there any, do you have any financial evidence that suggests it's not sustainable?
I think what Mr. Libby just told you, which is a $3 million plus quote for one school.
Yeah, so when you say it's not sustainable, it suggests that money doesn't exist. Is it that it's not sustainable? Or it's that, within the current budget, which it seems like you're comfortable with, it's not sustainable? Because that's a difference.
What do you mean comfortable with?
Well, there's a budget, right? And are you saying, within that budget, it's not sustainable? Or is it that it's not sustainable because the town doesn't have the money to afford it? Because that's a difference between what the budget has and what the town has.
Well, if you're proposing that the school committee obligate itself to undertake capital projects, it now becomes a school committee financial obligation.
Correct.
Which it now needs to find money in its budget that is appropriated to it.
Correct.
Right. What I'm saying to you is, if you're looking at $3 million per building, I just wonder where you think that money's coming from.
Well, the school committee needs to request the appropriation.
They, what they would need to do is get on the list of capital projects and see where that fits into the mix of many, many demands on capital, right?
Yeah, but I think you're misusing, keep using the term sustainable. You're basically, you're saying that it's not affordable right now for whatever reason.
No, I'm saying that I don't think the committee should be obligating itself to do capital projects in a collective bargaining agreement. For a three-year duration, what we're obligating ourselves to do per your proposal is to find millions of dollars to work on buildings, which I'm just concerned about where that money would be found to do that.
That money would, the school committee would request it, as Pete indicated, and the money would come from the town.
What if the town says no?
And, well, you gotta, you gotta start.
The contract.
You gotta start with the request. And there are kids, especially the highest needs kids, who are sweltering in September, in June, and everybody here knows, it's only getting worse. Each year, it's getting worse. We got to plan for it now. And the school committee needs to make the explicit request to avoid more medical emergencies and to facilitate learning that, where the conditions are going to deteriorate in the coming years.
Okay.
Well.
The only thing I could add is that we have been having ongoing conversations about capital improvement projects that have to happen with the schools. One of them definitely being air conditioning, you know, at two of the schools that are, you know. But with that is also conversations about roofs, schools are flooding, teachers have displaced in their classrooms, you know, those are also priorities. So for students and teachers. So those conversations are happening. This idea of air conditioning didn't just originate with the proposals. These have been ongoing conversations. And this is the second time that Mr. Libby has gotten some quotes on air conditioning for both of those schools. But there is also a list of priorities and not saying that it's not a priority, because I think it is a priority.
Yeah, and I think we just want to convey, like, years ago, it was considered more of a luxury. That's just not the case anymore for obvious reasons.
Yeah, I think the committee understands your point totally. It's, have we already talked about the fact that money is finite, right? And we have to be cognizant of that. Everybody struggles with that, you know? We have to find the balance, understanding that money's finite. But, and all I'm saying is, we, to put this in a contract that is an obligation to meet on day one, it's, that's, I don't think that is sustainable. I should have said it's not tenable, you know? Anyway, but, yeah, I mean, nobody wants sweltering classrooms.
Right, we think the sweltering conditions are not tenable.
I'm sorry?
We think that the sweltering conditions are not tenable.
Right. We get you. Yeah, okay.
Are we on number 12?
I think we are, yes.
12, yeah.
Okay. I think, I'm looking at the clock. We don't have much time.
I am, too.
Yeah, okay. Hold on a second.
12, half day.
I'm sorry?
Oh, we're on number 12.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the, the half day, day before December vacation, I'm assuming that, right now, the day before December vacation is a full day of school? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so that would require a half day for kids as well, which, again, would get us into the instructional time dilemma that we are concerned about. So for now, we reject that. We'll, you know, we're rejecting that. And then the association president release time proposal, number 13. The point two of a person's teaching schedule is 20%, which is a full day out of a week of not being with students. That's a concern, especially where, let's say the president of the association were an elementary teacher. To be out of the classroom for 20% of their time is, that's concerning to us. So we're going to have to reject that because it's not, it's not in the best interest of kids to have the president away that much from their instruction. Let's see. We're going to hold on proposal number 14, the bus monitor concept. I think we need a little more conversation about duties in general, you know? The DLC working conditions, proposal number 15. The provisions in this language, in our view, these more deal with programming than working conditions, student programming. And we, in our opinion, these don't belong in a contract. These are things that you might discuss with a team of professionals in designing a program for students. So we reject that one. Number 16, your proposal about department chairs. We have respective proposals on that topic. We'll have further conversation on that. On your proposal number 17, sick leave buyback increase, we're holding on that as a financial proposal. Temporary leaves with pay, personal days. We are, for the moment, we weren't able to check on the frontline aspect of this, so we're going to have to get back to you on that. On the subsequent language that you wanted to put in about personal days, releasing the restricted days. We fought, as I recall, to get those into the contract last cycle. We're not taking them out this cycle. It's not good for kids.
The black cards were put in last contract?
No, it was put in for the aides.
Yeah, it's put in for the aides, not you. The concept is with those, it's not good for students to have what might lead to many absences clustered around certain days. And.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So with them being added to the aidesman last time, and the district's concern is that this would cause, I'm assuming, just like a great number of people to be out on those days, has the reverse happened for the aides? Have people then suddenly stopped? Like, have they're gone from a bunch of people taking ESPs? Because that is, I mean, reverse data is data. So did there used to be a whole bunch of ESPs who took off said days and now, like, that number's been cut? Or is it, like, was it non? Because our argument last time was that it was negligible anyways.
All right, we'll look at that. We will hold on the proposal to have, well, actually, no, I take that back. You wanted to have every member have a same amount of days. So essentially, every person has a personal day, release day for association business? So that, that would mean that potentially, how many union members are there? It's 270?
346.
Yeah, so we'd have 346 days that we'd have to find substitute teachers, which is a financial liability.
Are we still on 18?
I'm sorry?
I don't have the numbers. Are we still on 18?
Yes, yeah, that's 18. So that, we'd have to reject that. It's just, that's a, that's a big financial liability. But I see that, last time around, you had mentioned that there's some, some training that goes on that's valuable. So if you would like to share with us who those people might be that maybe can come to our schools and plug them into a PD session, maybe we can do that.
Is there a number that you guys are willing to consider? Obviously, you don't have to answer that right now, but if not, one for each member, is there an amount you're willing to consider?
Well, right now, the contract allows for seven association reps to attend the Mass Teacher Association Leadership Conference and Annual Meeting. And three substitute teachers will pay for four. So we cover, the committee covers, three substitute teachers for, for folks to attend association business. So we're maintaining that the current contract is adequate?
I'm going to push back on that. Our delegation's now eight. But for the sake of, just, I would ask you to consider a question about any sort of number you have.
And I'm thinking that if you were to request a personal day for that, you could do that, right? You can use personal days for association leave, right?
Right, but.
Yeah. I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's a different type of.
Yeah, all right. Maybe you could ask the MTA to do their leadership conference on a Saturday, you know?
They did. I was there this past weekend.
Sure, okay. Okay, let's see, what else? The tuition, proposal number 10, tuition reimbursement increase, we're holding on that. We are each at our specific or our respective positions on salary. We probably will have more conversation on that at our next meeting, as well as stipends. Housekeeping, obviously, we agree with your proposal, this housekeeping proposal one, to gender neutral. And then the next one, I, we need to probably talk more about the aperture memorandum completed in October of '22. We'll get back to you on that one.
Okay.
All right. So.
Would we just want to, probably, I mean, we're now past 7:40.
Sure.
And we just gave each other a lot of stuff for both sides to discuss. Would we want to adjourn for the night and then go to March?
What's the next, is it the?
Six. I can't get that date right.
We also should do another date.
We have two.
The 24.
We have March.
Before we leave, we have some goodies for you. Yeah, it's, let me just grab a copy of these. But, yeah, we should probably pick another date.
March 1/1 right now. Yeah, we haven't checked in with any, you want to do that? Get back to them with some dates or something? We already have two scheduled.
Oh, we do, okay. We're passing around while you guys are talking a, and again, we'll send you the backups. You can do your own, check our math. But there's the school committee proposal, and then there's the TTA proposal on the major money items, and then the difference between the proposals. And as you look through this, I'm going to ask Mr. Montori and/or Mr. Libby, what is, you've done your budget presentations. you've done your budget presentations at your meetings. I think the town manager did one in January, and I believe Mr. Libby did one last night. What is the anticipated quote-unquote "new money" that's expected to be appropriated to the school district? Is it just overall operational budget?
Roughly 1.35 million in that ballpark.
And that is incorporated into the town's projected budget for next year. And I should ask you, Mr. Montori, while we're on camera, that budget new money is, it includes a property tax increase, yes?
Yes, the new money includes a property tax increase to levy up to the proposition two and a half maximum levy. It includes a small increase or an increase in our local receipts, and it includes level-funded state aid.
Level-funded, which is, on a good day, it's going to be level-funded, apparently.
We'll know in July.
Yeah. So, could I ask you, if you know, of comparing FY '24 to FY '25, what percent of the town budget is being allocated to schools last year, this year versus next year?
So, this year, we allocate, and we normally allocate 60% of the new money to the schools. Traditionally, that's been the practice. I think maybe one or two years, it's been maybe 55% when we needed to address items that were both in the interest of the town and the school. But this year, it's 60%, and it traditionally is 60%.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, it's kind of late. We don't want to get into a drawn-out financial discussion right now, but I think we know that annually, the town underestimates its revenues by millions of dollars. And we think that money, rather than bolstering free cash, for example, would be better used towards, towards education, towards supporting the Tewksbury's kids.
And we'll see, we'll have more to say about free cash next time, but you are aware that part of the town's budget approach is to not use one-time money to fund recurring expenses. As everybody's learning from Esser, you fund things with Esser, and then when the Esser money runs out, what do you do next? You don't have those one-time monies to...
We're not, we're not talking about one-time monies. Annually, regularly, this Tewksbury has underestimated certain revenues pretty dramatically. And I understand financial managers budget conservatively, right? But however, if that money could be used towards education, and we believe that it should go towards education, it's the most pressing need, rather than, rather than budgeting conservatively, take a look at prior years, get a picture of, an accurate picture of what the revenues are going to be, and then use that money for education rather than bolstering reserve funds.
Would you like to answer?
No, I appreciate his advice. I mean, and I never thought of that when I present the budget, to actually go back and look at how we're doing in other years.
That's sarcasm.
So...
Very good. You think you should do it.
Yeah.
And use it to support education...
Look, I'll be glad, I'll be glad.
Rather than socking away money into reserve funds.
You know what? That's not accurate, and I'll be glad to, at the next meeting, provide a presentation on how we estimate our receipts.
Which you've already done for the TTA.
I've already done once, I'll be glad to do it again for the rest.
Oh, we got the presentation, and it shows us that the town regularly underestimates substantially the revenues, and those revenues could be used to support education rather than bolstering, bolstering reserve funds.
When you say bolstering, that's, that's...
Increasing.
No, that's a, right, increasing, but it's a snapshot in time. You do know with those reserves, of reserves, the money that you're asking the town to spend is, once it's spent, it's gone. So, when the expense recurs next year, that money's gone.
Right. So, for example, local receipts.
Sure.
Take a look at the local receipts, what the estimates are and what they actually are.
Sure.
Annually, there's a difference of millions of dollars. Use those millions of dollars for education.
It's not that simple. It's not that simple. Every local receipt that we take in, if it's over our projections, there is a reason, and I'll be glad to go through those reasons at the next meeting with you. You're simplifying it, and it's just not the case.
If past history is a predictor of current finances, you can look over time at what that underestimation has been, get a better picture, and use that money for education.
Glad to go over it.
Yeah, we'll, we will have more information to tell the other side of that story at the next meeting.
And we will be, would be happy to look at this current years and prior years finances, reserve funds, and estimations of receipts. And it should be apparent to everybody, if prior history is a predictor of the future, that there are substantial revenues that could be used to support education. It's not being properly...
Well, we could, there's another side to that story we'll present at the next meeting, because we're 10 minutes over.
Actually, I'm sorry, Roseanne, I do have to push back a little bit in terms of, you know, the sarcasm comment. Is one of our agreements that...
My comment?
No, no, no. One of our agreements in our, in our ground rules is that we're going to treat each other with respect.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think sarcasm really has a place at this table. And I think that's really where I'm concerned right now. And I also am a little concerned that, as you stated for the camera, you know, you wanted to bring this in kind of last minute, actually, over the minute. And I want to remind everybody here that we have to make ethical decisions about our budgets to support our students on a day-to-day basis. And that's really the argument we're trying to make here.
I'm sorry, what did I say for the camera?
How we make it, how we make it work, you know, is what we're going to have to kind of figure out, but to include these sarcastic comments towards the end of a bargaining session, I don't know if that was quite the appropriate...
Well, I think that, that was in response to a rather patronizing comment that was made.
It wasn't patronizing.
Of course it was.
It was stating a fact.
No, you wouldn't be patronizing.
But it's patronizing to try to lecture us on financial management at the end of a bargaining session, already over time. The folks here have a full understanding of what they do and the needs that are there. We can, everybody here can look at each year's financial projections, what actually happens, and it should be apparent to anybody here who does such a review that there is substantially more money coming into the town than is being accounted for.
And as Mr. Montori said, it's not that simple. It's not that simple. And this committee is, you know, it's doing its best with limited resources, you know that.
Okay, it's limited, it's limited by design, not by, not by actuality.
Disagree, disagree.
I think we have a lot to digest.
Agree to disagree.
With our proposals.
The numbers and the facts and the prior history and prior budgets are what they are. You can agree or disagree, but you can look at what this, what this town projects it's going to take in, you can look at what it actually takes in, you can look at the increases in the reserve funds, and those are what they are.
I hate for the meeting to end on this note.
Yes.
This is a crummy way to end.
Yes, yes.
But clearly, we have a lot of conversation left to have between us all. A lot to digest in our proposals that we've shared. I'm sure we'll be in touch in between. Do you want to pick another date?
We have, we have two. Do we want to email the date for the third one out?
Um, yeah, if you want to do it that way, that's fine.
Okay.
I can...
We're targeting early April.
Yeah.
Before the vacation week.
Yeah.
To do, to do two in April, that's the intention, to do two in April.
Prior to vacation.
One prior to vacation, one maybe right after vacation.
Okay.
Obviously.
So, send some dates, and I will get the members of our bargaining team to agree to.
All right, have a great vacation week, everybody.
52, oh, fuck.
Pushing to adjourn, yes.
All right, 7:52.